Everybody, with their flag. United States of America. We proudly welcome the stands. One nation under God, indivisible, in the name of our Lord and our Saviour. Roll call. Ms. Mallonick. Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Ms. Renanopoulos.
Here.
Ms. Rappuskado. Ms. DeGrelle.
Here.
Ms. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Ms. Alcieri.
Right side.
Ms. DeGono.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to Herald and News, the Record, the South Burgenite, The Observer, County Press, posted in the lobby of the Council and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meeting of the board. First thing, we need the approval of the last two meetings, five and six.
Some more.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
All right, you've got a presentation of recognition.
Yes, I will.
Okay, we have two very special faculty members to be recognized tonight at the board meeting. And for this recognition, I'm going to ask their respective principals to each explain to you the award they're receiving and how they came to receive it. So we're going to start with Principal of Columbus School, Mr. Bobby Andrew Musso.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A few months ago, an email came to my email server and it stated that there was a nomination to be had for a teacher from an organization called Class of Teachers Who Rock. So with that, I had nominated one of my Grade One teachers, Christina Lassise, for that award that evening, at that time. So it's an honor and privilege tonight to present Christina Lassise into the 2018 Class of Teachers Who Rock. She was granted this distinguished award on April 10, 2018, at the Casa Bianca for a wedding-type celebration with only 24 other teachers throughout the state. That evening was filled with awards, prizes, gifts, and music hosted by the radio station that sponsored the event. The radio station made a public announcement recognizing Mrs. Lassise on Friday, March 23rd, 2018, at 9:00 a.m., and the entire staff and all of the students at Columbus School were able to hear the award given over the P.A. system. It was so exciting for our students to hear her name as one of the teachers on the radio by the announcer at that time, and he read about all of her accomplishments. Christina teaches Grade One at Columbus School and has been with the school district for 21 years. Her students enjoy interesting lessons each day, and her care and compassion are evident with her students. Again, congratulations to Mrs. Lassise for attaining this prestigious award. Thank you.
He's a great vocal player and she's a teacher who rocks, so what a pair. And our next award is going to be given out by the Principal of Lynnhurst High School, Ms. Laura Una.
It is with great pleasure that I call Ms. Giney up here with me. It's even better when you're front of the stage and everybody gets to hear how great you are. Ms. Giney is a math teacher in the high school, and we welcome her back. Thank goodness, she's back from maternity leave, so we welcomed her back this year. The award that Ms. Giney was recognized for is a really prestigious award. It's called the New Jersey Exemplary Secondary Educator Award. We recently had a bunch of teachers that were recognized for Teacher of the Year through the Governor of the Year program. This is actually a little bit more prestigious because it's recognized by the state. Each district is allowed to nominate only three educators, and we were fortunate enough to have an exemplary educator chosen at the high school. Some of the criteria is that the teacher is valued by the school, and she clearly is. She exhibits strong knowledge and pedagogy, has an engaging and inspiring presence that motivates and impacts students and colleagues. But in a nutshell, she makes math fun, and that's not an easy task. Anytime you pass her classroom for such a little girl and staffer, her class presence is huge, and anyone who's up on the second floor can feel that and senses that. So it is with great pleasure and honor that we give Mrs. Giney the 2017 New Jersey Exemplary Secondary Educator Award.
Mrs. DeMarco has a quick little report that she would like to do.
Hi, once again, good evening. So it seems since July of 2017, our primary focus within the district has been finances, finances, finances. And amidst that, the challenge was to keep every other facet of this organization moving in the right direction. As you can see from this evening's awards, the many awards that have been given that preceded this meeting throughout this year, we are continuing to produce outstanding students, and our faculty and staff are continuing to do amazing work. So I am just so proud of this entire organization and every member of it for their efforts in contributing to every facet of the district while we knew all of our attention needed to be on the financial condition and what was discovered about past practices and where they have led us to. In addition, it has taken its toll professionally, personally, and emotionally on many of us, and that is not to be understated. This has not been easy, and it's even more challenging to have to publicly announce and state and explain, but that is part of this job. So for my remainder of time here, I will continue to do that as I will this evening. By January of 2018, we recognized that our current district structure was not sustainable. We also recognized that our deficit was probably grander than we believed it to be when our oil was completed in December. We knew that major changes were going to be required in order to arrive at a balanced budget that then also allowed for payback to deficit findings. Nobody likes to do with less than we have been accustomed with in the past. Nobody likes to see good, strong personnel be let go to other districts. Nobody likes to provide less support than the support that has been offered in the past, but this was our reality. A reality that was thought about day and night, many dark hours of the night. It was thought about and managed on workdays, days off, and weekends. And in the midst of all of this, I had a lot of self-discovery and district discovery. And as situations unfolded, I came to really recognize that, you know, perhaps my greatest strength is also my greatest weakness. And I think one of my greatest strengths that has really guided me to good, secure places has been my belief in people. Most people are good. People come to do good work. We wake up to do good in the world, and I stick by that. But it's also that same belief for those with whom it doesn't apply where it can be a weakness as well. But in this instance, I saw such good in people during perhaps their hardest times. I've seen non-renewed employees respectfully expressing praise and gratitude for the opportunities that they were given here and for the ability to do really good work for the students of this district. That was their response to a non-renewal. I have seen these same non-renewal employees working in double time to complete the goals they set for themselves, not give up on them, but really just want to accomplish them before their time here was through. I have also seen these non-renewed employees reaching out to nearby districts and assuming that huge task of selling themselves and letting it be known all that they've done here. And I am so excited and honored and privileged to have heard from surrounding superintendents who reached out to me for references and recommendations because our teachers were making it to their finalist categories for jobs. Needless to say, I didn't have enough time to brag to them about the success of many of these candidates, but again, just kudos to them. Cuts had to be made and reductions enforced were necessary for this district to be able to continue. No outsourcing, however, took place in this budget, and I think that's an important piece to share with you. Custodians, child study team members, therapists, all of those groups that typically and easily, however unfortunate it might be, that can be outsourced to show financial gain or not. So we did our best to make sure that we kept as much of our faculty our own, and I think that this really speaks volumes about what's important to the administration and the board. We have 402 full-time personnel. Looking ahead to 2018-19, we have 10 positions reduced. So out of 402 to have 10 positions reduced, it's 2.5%. Are those 10 people valued and are we sorry to see them go? Without a doubt. But in the grand essence of the fact that in February, we were still looking at past practices being entered into this year's budget that were $4.7 million over, and that was forgetting the deficit. So when we think about the work that went into creating a balanced budget that allows for payback to deficits accumulated from years past, we have to just stop and take a minute and say that, you know, what could have been so much worse wasn't. But we also have to acknowledge the reality. We don't have a principal that lets us see into the future, and the reality is that a state monitor will come into this district. That's the reality. And the reality is that a state monitor has the authority to reexamine the budget and make changes and make adaptations. So it was our goal at this meeting to secure as many non-renewed employees into positions for next year as possible. That was a huge goal, and it was an enormous undertaking because we are at May 29th, and our budget did not get approved until May 7th. So I have to just give huge accolades to the administrative team that worked so hard to determine what our staffing for 2018-19 would be. I also have to give huge accolades to the association leaders who were there for me with every phone call, every question, every concern throughout this process. Many of those phone calls happened at night and on weekends. They can't happen during the day because our association leaders are busy working, but they have been critical, along with the administration, in allowing us to come up with an agenda that could renew as many personnel as possible on this evening. So once again, I just want you to understand the whole concept. I know it's not easy to accept, but in the grand scheme of things, we ultimately have a 2.5% reduction enforced in order to allow us to have a balanced budget and start paying back on the deficit that has accumulated. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Finance facilities and district planning, Ms. Renanopoulos.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under category of finance facilities and district planning committee may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that the following items, 1 through 6, be adopted. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
And now, we're going to do item number seven. Make a motion, item seven.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
Education and curriculum, Ms. Alcieri.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education and curriculum committee, may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
Especially because these items were part of the financial piece and the financial reconfiguration of the district, they were all presented at finance committee meetings and then in executive session as well. So since they were connected to personnel and connected to finance, that was the carryover. So at our last executive session, we discussed personnel and talked about these and answered the questions, and my understanding also was that the financial end of this, because it had its information there, was of course being communicated, US committees should be communicated to all of the members.
I'll read number one, and we'll vote on number one. I'll read number two, bullet A and bullet C. Be it resolved that the Lynnhurst Board of Education abolish the supervisor of curriculum and instruction position.
Roll call. Do I have a second? Roll call. Ms. Mallonick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
All right, this is the one we're going to vote on, 2A and C. Be it resolved that the Lynnhurst Board of Education approve the following job descriptions: Behaviorist, Information and Technology Specialist.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
Okay, now I'm going to read number two, bullet B. Be it resolved that the Lynnhurst Board of Education approve the following job description: Staff developer of curriculum, instruction, assessments, and technology.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Renanopoulos. Ms. Renanopoulos. Ms. Rappuskado. Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Yes.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
Number three. Be it resolved that the Lynnhurst Board of Education approve that any faculty member transferred from the high school level to the elementary level for the 2018-2019 school year be considered for return to the high school position should any vacancy become available in his, er, previous department and certification area during after the 2018-2019 school year.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Renanopoulos. Ms. Rappuskado. Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcieri. Ms. DeGono.
Four.
I know the vote was done on that item. I just want to make one comment on it, just so that I'm on the record for making the comment. It's important to make. We are doing all of our personnel in May because we had so many non-renewals as opposed to doing it in June when we would have had transfers considered. I just want to be on the record for saying that that resolution was extremely important to me because the understanding is that we may not know all of our retirements, we may not know all of the people who are not going to be returning, and I always think that it's best to keep teachers in their area of expertise and instead of moving teachers, not because we wanted to, but because we had to. It was important for me to make that recommendation to the board so that it would be considered for these people to stay in the places that they are most skilled and most qualified. So that was the reasoning behind that. I understand that it didn't pass, but I did want to be in the minutes for identifying that. My concern is that if in December, I don't know, if somebody in the high school, if they're pregnant or whatever, now you're going to take someone who was trained to run the high school to the elementary school and put them back into the high school, I just feel that that's a disruption to children in two classes, not just for one class, but also the whole elementary class, and that to me is a problem I would not want to see.
Policies, rules, regulations. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies and rules, regulations, committee, may so indicate now, and separate motion, each of the accepted action will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve items 1, 2, and 3. Roll call. Ms. Mallonick. Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcieri. Ms. DeGono.
Four.
Education and curriculum and safety and security, Ms. Mallonick.
Any member, any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education, safety, and security, may so indicate now, and separate motion, each of the accepted action will be entertained. Hearing none, I approve that items 1 through 5. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Mallonick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Rappuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGrelle.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeGono.
Four.
Athletic student activities substitute, Ms. Alcieri. Ms. Jarvis. Okay.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of community relations and safety and security committee may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the accepted action will be entertained. There are none, I mean that items 1 through 5 be accepted.
O'Callaghan. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Antonopoulos. Ms. Rappisgala. Ms. Drell. Ms. Donovan. Ms. Keith. Ms. Salkiri. Ms. Taguna. Four. New business, Ms. Drell.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business may so indicate now and a separate motion for each accepted action will be entertained.
For a business administrator in a financial committee. Jim, take the microphone, please.
This is for the business administrator in a financial committee. I'm understanding that it might be going with the new agency, but I am not sure yet and clear of the commission that could be negotiated between the actual insurance carrier and the broker to have a reduction in fees. Now, you're telling me today, as in today, right before, that is 2%. That's 2% of the total premium of all restrictions, drugs, health insurance benefits, etc. 2% of each item, what item?
All the church restrictions.
Because it's very important that I get it crystal. Because that's a lot where you're overstating the limit. Whatever reasons they are, we still don't know for sure, but in the business I am in, I can't afford to make a mistake and I have to be crystal clear on how much we're actually saving. So if the percentage was before 5%, and now they're saying 2%, that's a significant decrease. What is the premium?
Well, I was calling on our finance committee to the law for four months as savings going forward.
Up to 2%.
Guaranteed 300,000.
There's no way, what is the premium going forward? They're showing you the presentation, what is the premium going forward in the future?
No, no, that's for five months. They just tell me a fund based on what we have right now, where the savings can cut in, based on the pre-charge.
Pressure.
Right now, they're giving us 200,000, we have to have a 2% save once they get into...
Or what's on 200,000 basis?
On the initial look at our program initially, but then they were cut out looking into further. So what they were able to look for the one day that they had access was, they can give us at least 200 up to 200,000. So once they become a broker, they'll be able to look into it thoroughly.
So what they're saying right now is, it's definitely 2%. Definitely.
Make a motion that one should be adopted.
O'Callaghan. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Ms. Antonopoulos. Ms. Rappisgala. Ms. Drell. Ms. Donovan. Ms. Keith. Ms. Salkiri. Ms. Taguna. Four. Item 25 has to be taken out. To resolve the agreements that the schools and their board of education will be suspending in their curriculum. So that has to be taken out. Does the John...
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following... Oh, yeah. A trillion. We already know 25 is out. Will you need a thing? The 38 has to be done separately. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the first item may so indicate now and separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Make a motion that 1 through 24 be adopted.
O'Callaghan. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis.